All right, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the September 16th meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Can I ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, to God, the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Introductions, please. I'll start down here on my right.
Dave Simpson at large.
Brian Bellknap, Ward four.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Karen Mathews, Ward three.
Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Kate Fontaine at large.
John Ward five.
Yeah, Mr. Carrier has an excused absence for this evening. Right, next on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the August 28th and September 2nd 2020 meeting, as well as the certificated nominations for the individuals listed on your agenda. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bellknap, second. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. All those in favor? Seeing none. Sorry, motion passes. All right, public participation this evening is for the public to come on up, have a, take a few minutes to talk with us on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So it's a little tricky when people are not sort of congregating. You can't see who might be coming and who might not be coming. But we are opening public participation. Do you see anyone in the community room, Mr. Simpson? All right. I think so. Thanks, Mr. Anir. All good? Thanks, Mr. Anir. All right, closing public participation, moving on. Presentation, we have a presentation this evening on some of the technology platforms that are being used in our pre-K to 12 world. So this, I believe, am I moving on?
Yes.
Okay.
Come on up, ladies, and later.
All right. So as we're waiting for them to set up members of the school committee, these are, and I'm sure they'll go into it a little bit more, but the technology platforms that are being used for students as well as parents to access, sort of where I can get all this information at one time, unlike, you know, how, streamlining everything for families and students, I would say.
So I'm Stephanie Weber. I have been a tech coach here for four years now.
I'm Ursula.
So last week, we had over 20 technology professional development offerings for teachers and staff. We had a great attendance and participation, as well as building-based PD that they had as well. We will continue to offer technology PD sessions on Wednesdays for teachers. And then we also have some smaller, remote, like cohorts that are going on across the district. Today, we had our first parent session. We had about five participants for CSOFT, and we had 73 parents participate for Google Classroom. So that was great to see. And then we have a brief presentation to share with you, and it's just an introduction to the tools that we'll be using this year.
Stephanie, if you'd pull your microphone up a little bit closer, and Ursula's gonna wanna do.
Sure.
Speak nice and loud. Use your recess voice.
Let's look at a few technology tools your child may use this year. We'll go. Let's look at a few technology tools your child may use this year. We'll go over how to get started and what it'll look like. Students will sign in clicking "I'm a student." Tap Scan QR Code, Enable Camera, click OK. Scan the QR code that your teacher has sent. You can turn on notifications, allow. Tap on Activities to see what activities your teacher has sent. The inbox will show you any class announcements your teacher has sent. Click Add Response to start your first activity. You can view the instructions here. When you're done your assignment, hit the green check mark to send it to your teacher. Families will download the Family CSOFT app to view any of their child's work that has been submitted to the teacher. They can also comment using this app. Tap Family Sign In. Tap Scan QR Code, Enable Camera, click OK. Scan the QR code that the teacher has sent. It'll ask you to connect to your child, and then you'll create your account. Here's a student example of an activity in CSOFT, and their teacher leaving feedback for them.
Dawson, great job taking a picture and posting this on CSOFT. I can see you are really working hard at having all your letters in those teeny tiny boxes. And it looks like you already know how to make a lot of your lowercase letters. Looks like we might be ready for the next step already, which is practicing your last name and making sure that one looks correct, too. Ciao ciao for now.
Parents' Guide to Google Classroom. Parents can access their child's Google Classroom by logging in as their child in Google Classroom. You can go to classroom.google.com, or you can go to ClassLink, Google Apps, and Google Classroom, and have your student login. Make sure your child's teacher has your email address so they can invite you to receive email guardian summaries. You will see missing work, upcoming work, and class activities in the email. When students first log into Google Classroom, this is what their stream looks like. They have a class menu, their stream. They can see classwork and people. People is where they can contact teachers and classmates. Under Classwork, students can see specific assignments, due dates, their status, as in... As in, is it assigned, submitted, returned, or late? They can attach files, and they can view their assignment. Google Classroom looks a little different on the iPad. Here you have Stream, Classwork, and People. Here's a look at the Student Classwork page. You can find Tech Help at our Tech Department website by going to the Auburn School Department website, select Technology Team, then click Home Learning Resources. If your child is in elementary school, please make sure that they contact their child's teacher first before filling out the iPad Help form. If your child is in middle or high school, they can fill out the high school or AMS Tech Help form. Once you fill out these forms, someone will respond as soon as possible.
Can I, I just have a question to ask. So which grade levels are using CSOFT, and which grade levels are using Google Classroom?
CSOFT is pre-K through second grade. And Google Classroom is 3 through 12.
Any questions, school committee members? We are all pretty much about to, a lot of us are about to be living this, so... Yeah.
The Google Classroom and CSOFT. Once we have the AV system set up, will that be able to be easily incorporated in this? Or will that be something different?
So those would be two separate. So CSOFT and Google Classroom are a learning management system. So that would be where students are submitting work. But teachers could show things using the Pro AV system on how to, like, set up their Google Classroom or submit work and assignments through the Pro AV system.
And this is, just, so I have a lot of experience with some of these. So when you talk about even pre-K and K kids, so it is, it can be their work that they can, you know, take a picture of, and their family can see it where they are, or they can do it even from home, too. So all their, you know, assignments are all sort of listed on there. So no more running around for emails, no any of that, right? This just streamlines everything. And if you are in a classroom, you're in a history classroom, you can just see all your work in one place.
Correct.
Right? Yeah, absolutely.
I think these videos are great. Like, because it really focuses on somebody who is not tech savvy versus they are tech savvy. You know, walking through them every step of the way. You know, this is great. One of the sheets I thought I saw, that maybe Peter, you can answer, Seth, that I saw from home with my girls, was registration for power. You gonna do a very similar video for that for parents as well? I know my wife was working through registering and...
So there actually is a video. It's a YouTube video. It's, the link is in, in the letter that came home. Obviously, it's difficult when you have a link like that, that somehow you have, they have to type it because it's on paper. I also will be doing an online Zoom session for parents who need sort of step-by-step help in real time. And we'll do everything we can. I mean, that's one of those processes that, there are certainly some gotchas there, and it's, and we know, because we've been doing this with middle and high school students now for, I think, 10 or more years. We know that it's not the easiest process in the world. And getting all of K through six set up in one season is certainly a daunting task. But we think it's really important because it will give parents access to information and make it easier for us to pass things back and forth.
Yep, perfect.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for all your hard work. I know this is not easy. I appreciate hearing there are over 20 PD sessions for teachers. I'm not here in this district, but I know they were very helpful, the ones that I attended in my own district. So thank you for, for being available. First point of contact, maybe, if a parent is stuck and doesn't know what to do with CSOFT, first point of contact, which should be the classroom, classroom teacher?
Classroom teacher, yep. And then we'll be there for help after that.
All right, great. Thank you. And usable on iPads, usable on Chromebooks, usable on Macs, usable on any electronic device you have.
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, thank you all. All right, next on the agenda, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mine is very short. I would like the committee to know that we had a rock star start for the beginning of the school year. Transportation rolled without a hitch. Kids got their lunches, which, by the way, we've served 153,000 meals when we were closed and over the summer. So I just sort of filed that away. It's pretty impressive. The classrooms, Michelle and I, were able to get to all the buildings, and that was sort of a whirlwind of a day. But we were able to visit classrooms. We installed kids. They were observing the protocols. And our staff was simply amazing. I just, I'm here to tell you that they rocked it. So great start to the year.
Well, thank you. All right, mine is pretty brief as well. School Committee Chairperson's Report. I'd just like to say that on behalf of the, on the school commit, on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to wish everyone a wonderful start to their school year. And understand that these are, obviously, some new times that we're all experiencing in school. So I just wish everyone the best of a start to our school year. All right, City Council update. Mr. Carrier's not here with us this evening, so I'm gonna move on to committee reports. Let's start with Finance Committee.
I'm gonna do my best, and I know Adam's gonna, he's got my back.
I do.
It was, it was a very quick meeting, as really the school year is just kicking off. There hasn't been many expenditures. I do believe that the daycare grant was secured, which is a huge help, above three quarters of a million. Also, most of the projects, as of September 10th, were done, that we had funded, that we voted to fund. There was a couple still, the Fairview partial roof replacement and the gas tank. Still, that's, it's in, yeah, that might be done, actually.
The, the gas tank, I think, was supposed to come yesterday. I'm not sure if it did, but if not, it any day now.
So there wasn't much, really, the meeting was 15 to 20 minutes. And I think, you know, as we move deeper this year, be much more to report.
You did an excellent job.
It wasn't much to say.
It was nice to look back and see all the projects complete.
Yeah.
It's kind of a whirlwind as it's happening, and then you realize, hey, we got some stuff done, so.
Yeah, that was a good long list of, of things to really read through, and it felt like check, check, check. Great. Great, okay. Thank you. All right, Policy Subcommittee. What's all? Sorry, you're flying solo tonight.
Had a meeting, and policies are in here that we gotta get up tonight, and the other ones we have to review. Have a meeting, I believe, next. Yeah, keep, keep moving on.
Yes, we're doing a great job getting through these. I know it's a lot of work. I understand. It's, I know it's a lot of work. These policies require that, and I appreciate the time you guys are being able to take, to get us through them. So it's great to work with updated policies. All right, Curriculum Subcommittee. I was able to meet with Shelley, it seems like yesterday, but it was actually some, the 10th, I think, last, last week? All right, last, last week at some time. And while there was no new curriculums being rolled out or needing, needing approval, it was a great opportunity to sit down and have the conversation about how the curriculums fit into the, the new model of what school is. And so we were able to talk about pacing guides and understand how to, how to get the learning in throughout this, this entire year. The curriculum is not being, no curriculums are being watered down. There are, in addition to pacing guides, I think you called them learning plans. Is it learning plans? So families can actually, you know, sort of take a peek. This is what my child is learning. This, and those can be pushed out through those Google Classroom and, and CSOFT platforms. So it was amazing just to kind of see the work that they did in the, in the time when, I think, starting August 25th, maybe, that work had started, or if...
It worked out all summer.
All summer. Okay, thank you. So I was gonna say, there's, noticed the hesitation in my voice. I'm like, there's, wow. So I think for me, as a curriculum person, just seeing how this was just laid out, and it was a great roadmap. So I think... So I thank you for walking me, for walking me through that. So that was mine for curriculum subcommittee. Anyone else have anything they need to report out on any of the other committees at this? Yes, Mr. Simpson.
CLC, if I could.
Absolutely.
Parent on the third, um, September 3rd, and they are going to begin late this month or next month, offering virtual activities for students on their remote days, which that would be every day, right? Cause most, some kids are remote every day.
Right, depending on what cohort they're in.
Mm-hmm. Go this afternoon, check-ins, homework help, enrichment for some low performing students. Last year's students will be enrolled first, um, that, that'll happen. Um, they're in the process of ordering 120 take-home kits that'll provide like 30, 36 hours, excuse me, of STEM enrichment. Um, all, all six schools will have staff available. At this point, it, it'll all be virtual. There's just no transportation available, but it's good to see that they're able to, to find a way to do what they do.
Thank you, absolutely. Anyone else?
Adam, you can correct me, cause when I was reading your finance report, you were talking, there, there was a mention about the, the new ELHS building and how it's in the hands of the DOE.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I know, I don't have the paper in front of me. Yeah, it was in the finance report about the ELHS building and how it had been, it's, it's progressing, obviously, but there was something and I can't remember now what phase it was in. I thought it, I read that it was the DOE. And of course, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Sure, yeah, I mean.
Feel to pick up what I'm throwing at you.
I apologize, cause I can't think of what you're referring to, but, uh, we do, we go very soon up to the, up to Augusta to go before the state board.
Okay.
For the, for the next step of approval, I think that's in, uh, early November. Uh, but at this point, Harriman's finishing up the construction documents. They should be at 100% by the middle of next month. And the bid, uh, they have gone out for pre-qualification for bidders, so that's happening.
That's right.
Maybe that's what it was. Things are starting to move. After all this time, it's really exciting to finally see things happening. We're getting to that point where things are really gonna start happening. So it's very exciting.
And we have a meeting coming up the last Tuesday of this month for building committee?
Yep, September 29th.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on from subcommittee reports. Next, uh, motion to accept the finance report for August 2020 as, as presented. Thank you, Mr. Bellnap. You have a second? Thank you, Mr. Pauso. Any conversation, comments? All right, let's take a roll call vote, please. All those in favor to, uh, a motion to accept the finance report? Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to old business. These are the policies that are in front of us again regarding, and all of these policies are in, um, regards to the evaluation of the superintendent. So let's start with policy CB, school superintendent. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy CB, school superintendent for a second reading and adoption?
So moved.
Oh, thank God, take a faith for first, Pam Hart for a second. Uh, open it up. No one out there for public comment, but if someone needs to jump in, just interrupt me. Bring it back to the school committee for a conversation. Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, approve policy CB. Ian, you're in favor? All right, uh, motion second. All those in favor, motion passes. Sorry, I'm gonna apologize, I too have been in school for many days and my brain is sort of just not following with what my mouth is saying right now, so I apologize for that. Uh, next, policy CBI, the evaluation of the superintendent. Can I entertain a motion to approve? Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Simpson, second by Mr. Bellnap. Conversation, comment, sarcastic mark, seeing none. Can we take a vote? Motion, uh, Mr. Simpson, are you opposing on that one? Motion passes. All right, new business, the collective bargaining agreement between the Auburn School Committee and the Auburn Education Association Food Service Unit. You have all received a copy of that contract, so therefore can I entertain a motion to ratify the 2020-2023 bargaining agreement between the Auburn School Committee and the Auburn Education Association Food Service Unit?
So moved.
Second.
Faith, thank you, Mr. Bellnap for a second. Questions, comments, debate, seeing none, take a vote. All those in favor, motion passes. Policy CBIE, committee evaluation of the superintendent reading form. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy CBIEI, committee evaluation of the superintendent reading form for a first reading?
Go move.
Bellnap a second. To Mr. Simpson. Questions, comments, debates, seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor? None opposed, motion passes. Next, policy CBIE2, evaluation of superintendent reading form. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy CBIE2, evaluation of the superintendent? Thank you, Mr. Bellnap, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Pam, questions, comments, debate, seeing none, vote, motion passes. Uh, next, uh, this one I'm gonna give a little bit of, um, I'm gonna give a little backup on, um, entertain the motion first, to approve a school committee member to the Auburn Planning Comprehensive Committee, and I am asking for, um, I'm nominating Dan Pauso to serve on that. Can I motion to appoint Dan to that?
Above.
Thank you, Mr. Bellnap, can I entertain a second? Uh, I think I heard Mr. Simpson first. So comment on that one. This is, uh, this was in the paper as well. So once every 10 years, um, there is a work group that the city forms. They're tasked with updating the city's, uh, the Auburn comprehensive plan and, uh, that is, it's up now for its 10-year review. So as part of that committee and that work group, the, uh, city has asked that the school committee appoint a member. Um, I have appointed Dan, and so we have a motion with a second. So, uh, any other questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor of appointing Dan to that committee?
Thank you, Dan.
Dave Simpson's got a smirk on his face over there. Thank you, that motion passes. All right, next, sports for the fall season. Can I entertain a motion to approve cross? Thank you, Mr. Simpson, give a second. Thank you, Mr. Bellnap. Questions, conversations, debate around a motion to approve cross-country golf, field hockey, and soccer for the fall season? Public comments? Questions, comments, debates?
The only comment I have is, I think it's, at, at some level, it's tragic, we're, we're eliminating volleyball. I think that the medical community responded to that favorably, that it's done safely, and I don't know how many governing bodies have touched this at this point. This is the easiest thing I will ever vote on for the rest of the kids. Have done everything that's been asked of them. I was at DL last night running and there were kids playing soccer, throwing the, it was just like, this is, this is well, this is so. I, my, I, for the record, I wish we were voting to allow, um, the volleyball and football.
I do as well. It's my hope that, um, perhaps football will take some of the MPA recommendations and play maybe some seven-on-seven scrimmage, some Ironman competitions, some throwing, passing, kicking, whatever we can do to keep these kids, uh, keep these kids active, but I am very sorry they, that they can't play the game. Yes, Mr. Bellnap?
Question, Todd. Have they made a decision or a final decision or even remotely a decision for moving football and volleyball to the spring? You know, there was talks of potentially moving it to the spring, and if so, what are the implications of them doing that? Like, obviously you got football players that wanna play baseball, you know, you got stuff like that, but is there a chance that it could be played in the spring?
Yeah, it, it is a chance and, kinda echo what Mr. Simpson said, our, our kids deserve that chance, in my opinion. Uh, the, the easy one is volleyball. Uh, and hopefully as we get into, um, that late winter, early spring, we're gonna be in a better situation with COVID and that we can easily move that inside and take care of that for our girls volleyball program. Football's gonna be a little more difficult and right now, there's a lot of ideas and a lot of thoughts. And Dr. Brown actually has a great, uh, term that she may wanna market called the skinny season. Uh, it's a shorter season and we're gonna try to squeeze that in between the winter and the spring. Maybe we bump that spring season a little bit further. That's been some of the conversation at the MPA level. But you don't wanna go too far into July. You start getting to family vacations, you start getting into American Legion, those types of things, so. Uh, they, they've, um, committed at the principal's association to start looking at the winter seasons now, so that we're not in the situation where we'll give you something on Wednesday and it gets delayed and, so. The hope is that, um, by November 17th, we have firm plans in place for that winter season.
You've just answered my question, uh, Mr. Simpson, which is going to be, how do we encourage the MPA to begin those conversations now regarding winter? So we don't have to delay a season, we don't have to postpone a decision, we don't have to make, we can, we can just be ready to start.
I think the conversation was, uh, let us catch our breath last Friday and this weekend and hopefully, uh, they got right after it on Monday.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so any other questions or comments?
Are they practicing though?
So, uh, two of our, two of our activities for the fall, uh, the girls volleyball and cheering, have decided to stop practicing and wait for that, uh, late winter, early spring. Through the MPA, they said football is still allowed. They're, they're back in the summer programming model, similar to what they were doing, um, in that Phase Four, with the understanding that they could be prepping for seven-on-seven. And once again, uh, the, the guidance that came out created more questions than answers, so we're, we're still trying to, uh, work through that so that we can have a plan in place. And hopefully by next Monday, our football kids will know exactly what pass punt kicks, Ironman, seven-on-seven. So hopefully we'll have a better plan in place.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what do we, what, what's the plan, Todd, for stipends for football and volleyball?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the first part of the question?
Uh, like the stipends that, you know, I, I know before, like last season, we had kind of prorated them, but what are we doing where, you know, some of these coaches are gonna, football's gonna continue to practice? You know, are we gonna just continue paying the stipends like we had?
Yeah, we had that conversation, Dr. Brown, do you want us to take that?
Sure, I'll, I'll take a stab at that and then we can, uh, open it, open it up if I've missed something. Uh, when we talked this afternoon, um, we, I learned that the two seasons that have really come to a halt and that would be the cheering and the volleyball are about half, halfway through. And so we figure that half now, and if it goes in the spring, then we'll pay the other half then. And for football, if it goes all the way through, which it appears that it is, kids are still engaged, they're still doing something, that we will pay out that stipend. And if we have, honey's word, a skinny, which would be about six weeks or about half, that we would use some of our COVID funds to help pay for that stipend in the spring. We estimated, Adam, it's about $12,000 for a skinny football stipend for this, that we feel we can cover and easily justify. This is directly related to COVID. I talked about that with the association leadership. They were very reasonable, said that made a lot of sense. Their only request was to make sure that the information is communicated to, to coaches so that they know what's going on. And, uh, Mr. Rineer, there you are, has committed to making sure that.
Would those funds be available next spring?
The funds, we can use COVID money now to pay our coaches. Um, and then if we, if we have that skinny, then we'll have those funds available then. We'll, we'll be able to cover it. And even if we can't use COVID funds, it's not an outrageous amount of money. I think given what the kids have been through, it's worth it.
Oh, absolutely, I agree totally. I was, I was not a proponent of removing it. I, I think we ought to, absolutely.
I think it's a right to do.
It's really, it's out of completely out of our control. I agree with Dave. I mean, we should be playing both, but.
And I do have a question, Todd, and I don't think the MPA oversees middle school athletics, but what is the plan for middle?
Yeah, I have some disappointing news there. Uh, we, we met this afternoon via Zoom and our Southern Maine Middle School Conference that we just joined, um, because half of that conference is in York County and they are in a yellow right now, the, uh, the vote was to not have any fall interscholastic at our middle school level. Uh, Bob Griffin, the principal, and Anthony Timberman immediately, uh, we got on another Zoom call at about five o'clock and the plans are already in place. Mr. Timberland's, uh, working on some intramural programming and it won't look, um, it won't look like an interscholastic piece, but they're really gonna work hard to keep the cohorts together on Monday and Tuesday, so we're not battling the transportation and getting kids there. But there will be intramural programming, uh, run by our fall coaches at the middle school. Yeah, so the, the hope is that they're gonna be interested in, in soccer, cross-country, and, uh, field hockey.
Right, because there is no football at the middle school, correct?
Just through the rec department.
Okay, that's through the rec. They, are they playing?
They're following the, um.
Community sport.
The community sports and the MPA and very similar, they're gonna do some pass punt and kick and some Ironman with no equipment, no, no helmets, no shoulder pads, as are, same as with the high school.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I, I can completely empathize with parents who are with the football. My son is, lives and breathes baseball, lost a season this past, um, spring, was devastated cause he worked so hard to try to get in shape to really play and, um, and, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with the spring. And I feel, I feel terrible about them not being able to play, cause these kids, this is, they live to play, right? And not being able to do that, I, I, I feel bad for them. As far as intramural and rec football, is there something like that for high school kids for volleyball and football? Or is it just doing the seven-on-seven and, um?
So the, the, the high school kids are staying, for football anyways, are continuing to work with Coach Sterling and his staff. And, um, you know, the seven-on-seven is still apart, but they're very active. You're not familiar with the Ironman? We have these huge, uh, tires that they flip.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they were jumping on the plyo boxes yesterday, so, um, kudos to our coaches. Uh, their, their leadership is, over the last week, has been about trying to make the best out of a bad situation. And really, it, it wasn't about, uh, football the last couple of days, it was about life lessons and trying to help our kids understand that there's gonna be times in your life when you're gonna have disappointment and how do you stay positive and work through it? So they're, they're trying to do some of those workout things and, like I said, we're still waiting for some guidance on the football piece. The volleyball kids, uh, working with Coach Williamson, they, they really wanna play that sport inside. There's been some, um, offers to play outside, uh, but it's really a different game when you're playing in the sand and at the beach. They really wanna play that competitive Olympic-style volleyball inside and they've chosen to wait until the, till the spring.
Now, are other schools, um, is every school in Maine participating, like taking the advice of the MPA and doing no football, but maybe do seven-on-sevenths? So every school? So, um, if they do, and I'm not a huge football, uh, aficionado, so the seven-on-seven, can you just explain that to me? So, I mean, do they play amongst themselves or do they play other teams from other schools?
I'll let Mr. Rineer, he, he was the standout football player.
Oh, gosh.
Back in the day, so he can explain seven-on-seven for you.
So you're taking away four positions off the field.
Okay.
From the 11 and it, and it taking four linemen out of, out of the game, which is why, as Todd was saying, they're, they're trying to be creative and come up with other ways for those individuals to have some level of participation, which is why they were talking about the Ironman piece. Where we are with that is we, we don't have enough information, we're just making guesses and projections of what could come of seven-on-seven. And what's, what's happening right now is our players and coaching staff are, are staying in that Phase Four and trying to develop, um, what they kind of do in the summertime anyway, which is doing these seven-on-seven competitions. So until we get any, any more information from the coaches association and the MPA, we have, we have nowhere to go with it. And we're hoping to get some information and, uh, understand what, what could be possible for that, uh, in terms of, are we just doing seven-on-seven amongst ourselves or there are some opportunities to do that with some other schools? And as Todd was saying earlier, there's no helmet, there's no shoulder pads.
There's no tackling.
No tackling whatsoever. It's very much a, a controlled situation, but it allows the kids to go compete and develop their skills. And I would, I, I really challenge our, our coaching staffs to really start to see, are there some other ways that those, those four other people who are off the field, that, that, those positions have some other ways that they can compete, um, above and beyond weightlifting and, and flipping tires that can be really fun, but at the same time, we need to honor them to have an opportunity to really show their, their skills. And I, I'm eager to see what can come up with that, but this allows seven people on the field and there's seven people that are defending them. Uh, and there's a variety of ways to do that. They blow the whistle, that can be flagged, can be touched, but there is no tackling, there is no equipment. that can be flag, can be touched, but there is no tackling, there is no equipment. Uh, and it, it really allows those kids a chance to, to play and, and, and be involved. And it, uh, develops that team component that, that is so, and keeps them together. Uh, and a lot of times, it happens in the summertime as a pre to a preseason, as they get ready for a season. So it really has some benefits there, but right now, we don't have enough information about what, what others are doing and what is possible. So our, our, what I'm seeing and understanding is that our coaches are staying with the phase four, and they're staying with prepping their kids with seven-on-seven at the very least. It'll, it'll be Edward Little playing maroon and white, Edward Little.
If, if we do get to, uh, an interscholastic seven-on-seven, we will stay within that model of staying within the county or the adjacent county. So it will be Lewiston, it will be Levitt, it will be Oxford Hills, it'll be Poland.
And that would be a really modified situation.
Similar to what we're doing in golf and, and cross-country and.
But we can't move there because we don't have enough information.
Yeah.
All the way around.
Which is unfortunate, because, you know, we still don't have enough information, which is, it's frustrating for everybody. And I know that the football team is a huge, it's, they're a family. You know, I used to drive up here and for my kids to do another sport, and you'd see the, the meals that they make, and it's a really, they're a great group, so.
And to be honest, you know, kudos to all of them. All of our teams, like I, I look at our field hockey and our boys and girls soccer, they're, they're really having to adapt to some of the modifications that are coming to them, and they're really working hard to develop their team culture and, and how they're going to adapt for this season as well. Um, so there's a lot of adaptations that are happening by the, the coaches and the kids, and they're responding because as we've, you know, they, they wanna be doing this. This is, this is exciting for them, and now they have this opportunity, and they're adapting to it, and it's really awesome to see.
I'm glad we still have those sports to, that the kids still have that.
So piggybacking on that, we do have a motion on the table to approve cross-country golf, field hockey, and soccer for the fall season. So any other questions or comments?
Just one of the question. Do we, do we anticipate a lot of these other sports like, uh, you know, maybe soccer, field hockey, the attendance going up because, say, football can't really, you know, they, they're not really gonna have a, maybe a full season, so maybe those guys will switch and play soccer? Are we gonna see, you know, those other teams ha, you know, almost max out because of people switching like golf or, you know, those other sports?
So what, what we've seen, um, since the announcement last week, and it, it's pretty neat to watch because it's, it's all on our, uh, online Family ID, um, registration platform. We, we had, uh, a couple of young ladies from, from, um, volleyball switched back. Uh, I think one is doing golf now, and I think one went to cross-country. So there has been a little bit of that movement, but I kind of echo what Pam said, that, that football group has, has got some real camaraderie, and I think you're, you're gonna see them stick together.
Any other questions? All right, let's take a vote. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of allowing these, uh, fall sports that I mentioned before, raise your hand. Motion passes. Those fall sports.
Thank you.
Good to go. Absolutely. All right, everyone, upcoming meetings, October 7th at 7:00 PM, uh, October 21st at 7:00 PM. Actually, I believe, let me, um, and let me check with the committee here. Um, if it's a regular meeting, are we okay if there's no, if the regular meeting, are we okay to begin those at 6:00 PM instead? Or do we wanna leave a regular meeting, start at 7:00 PM? Kind of object to starting at 6:00 if we have a regular meeting. So it's either 6:00 we'll start, 6:00 with workshop, and then regular meeting 7:00, or if we have nothing on the agenda, is it okay to start at 6:00 for a regular meeting?
Fine, baby.
If I need a motion.
There's never a workshop when we still be starting?
I don't need a motion. We'd be starting at 6:00. Be starting at 6:00 PM. Yep, workshop or none, or not. So let's switch those times to 6:00 PM. All right, thank you. Can we send a remind? Yes, I will. I will remind Dave to, no. Okay, absolutely. All right, future agenda items and requests for information, anything at this time? Yep.
Um, so on the October 7th, um, I think we need an update on the ProAV and where we are. Um, I also wanna update for winter sports, so hopefully we keep on top of that because I really wanna see these guys play.
So that one, do you, if it's, if it's reg, so as soon as it's available, let's put it on the agenda? Okay.
That's fine, yeah. Whenever, whenever it's available, but just keep it in the forefront. And then the other one, I think we also need to keep on the forefront, is the fundraising for the new high school.
Yes, that one is coming up. Yep. Okay, so I wanna make sure, um, an update on October 7th, the ProAV, winter sports update as soon as available. Uh, and what did you just tell me?
Fundraising.
On the fundraising, yes, yes, fundraising. I think that one is on, I don't have my datebook in front of me right now. I think that.
The other thing Karen, is on the agenda, the building committee is no longer as a subcommittee. Is that how it's supposed to be? Is it just left off here inadvertently, or is that kind of?
It is, uh, building subcommittee. So when there are, oh, we, that one, I'll just back up my notes. I think we've taken that one off. It meets just once a month, so when it, when it meets, there will be, it will be part of my, um, committee report. I have to think back for a second, why they.
Negotiation's off because it's all.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can't, yeah.
Nothing to report ever.
Yep, absolutely. So when, yes, that will be part of my incorporating, part of my report. All right, anything else, ladies and gentlemen? All right, at this point, can I entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bellnap. Thank you. Um, all those in favor, seeing none opposed. Motion is, uh, means adjourned, 7:44 PM. Thank you all.